Go ahead and let in the audience members hit record and after you hear it say recording in progress, you're free to go.
All right.
Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, twelfth, and city council work session. We've got a couple of items to discuss that'll take pretty much the whole system envisioning. So our first item up is our climate action plan update with lead Matty, I believe.
Yeah, I'll intro Matty.
There you go.
Mayor Council, good to see y'all. Joined tonight by Nick Westendorf, Deputy Public Works Director. Sorry, I'm out of practice. Joined tonight with Matty Cheek, our analyst in public works, and Josh Proudfoot, our consulting team to discuss our foundational work we've done on the climate action plan. And so tonight is really what we've, what we put together that we're going to use as the basis of our plan and the actions that are going to come from it. Hopefully this is enlightening and we have some good questions and kind of help set the bar for the plan and our future updates to come. And with that, I will hand it off to Matty.
Alrighty, Nick. My name is Matty Cheek. I'm a management analyst in our public works department and I am co-leading the climate action planning process with Nick. And I can share my screen really quick. Give me just a second here. Okay. Uh, so we're here today to provide an update on the climate action planning process and spend some time into the weeds on kind of the main problem of climate change and what we can expect here locally in the future. So a quick overview of what we'll be talking about, I'll provide this update and then we'll do a deep dive into what I'm calling defining problem with our consultant Josh. That consists of two components. One is climate one oh one, which is just real bare bones basics of science. And the second is future physical conditions, which will look at what Twalton's climate is expected to look like under different climate action scenarios. After that, I'll provide a couple more points on nets with community engagement and then we'll open it up for discussion and questions. So for the planning process update, I've got two components there. Ones about the greenhouse gas emissions inventory and the others about the look and stakeholder engagement process. So first for the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, we wrapped up data collection end of April and we're currently working on analyzing that. We ended up collecting data for the years twenty eighteen to twenty one to gain an understanding of how energy use varied over the last few, but we ultimately landed on using twenty nineteen as our baseline year for comparison to avoid any anomalies due to COVID nineteen. So essentially we'll measure against the last quote unquote normal year that we have on record and then we can keep tracking that information from there. Lastly, on this one, we expect our inventory to be complete at the end of summer and will return to council in early September to provide an update on our findings. Moving over to stakeholder and public event, this is all starting to ramp up, which is really exciting. So on the stakeholder engagement side of things, we're hosting a series of adaptation themed stakeholder meetings this week. The first will focus on next systems, the second on people and the third on economics. We've invited folks from local agencies, including the counties, the state, as well as representative on nonprofits and businesses in Twalton. The purpose of these meetings to ensure that participants understand the range of future conditions in Twalton and talk through specific impacts in terms of how and they'll occur and who will experience them most intensely. We'll also try to determine some necessary actions to ensure livability prosperity in Twalton, which will form some of the basis for our plan like Nick mentioned earlier. Um, let's see, the public engagement side of things. We completed our public involvement education plan earlier this spring, which shapes our engagement work moving forward. We've divided this into three phases, the first of which we're starting right now. So phase one is about building awareness and understanding of the issue. And that's what we'll be mostly working on this summer. The goal of phase two will be to gather feedback on draft adaptation mitigation actions this fall and winter. And then the goal these three will be to gather feedback on the draft plan this winter and spring. Some of the engagement strategies we'll use throughout this project include interactive project website that will be updated monthly. We actually just launched the end of last week, so we'll be sharing that out really soon. So stay tuned for that. We'll also use project fact sheets and graphics to share outreach events as well as a few social media campaigns. We'll attend meetings and events and then host some on open houses and in-person workshops later this fall. Alrighty, so we're going to shift gears now and move into the education component of the session, the help of Josh. Reminder, Josh Proudfoot is the principal at Good Company or research and management consulting firm that focuses on the agencies histories that serve human needs. From food and water to energy transition and more. To date, Good Company has conducted thirty six climate action mitigation and adaptation plans and one hundred and fifty greenhouse gas inventories for public agencies, including some of our neighbors of Milwaukee and Beaverton. Josh is joining us from Eugene where Good Company's main office is located. And before I turn it over, I just want to say some of you might already be familiar with some of the content of this presentation. But we thought it was really important that everyone receive this presentation because we all want to be on the stage about what the problem is and how it came to be. Because that will enable us to select most appropriate strategies to adapt to and mitigate change locally. So I'll go ahead and pass it over to Josh now. Yeah.
Great. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for this opportunity to present to you. I'm going to start with climate one oh one, which is kind of the basics of how climate change works and why we know it exists. And then I'll move into that presentation of how is that going to be felt in Twalton? So next slide, here we go. So what is a greenhouse gas? So we're doing the house gas inventory. And what that is about is counting all of the emissions that matter towards climate change. So greenhouse gases trap heat in the atmosphere. And there are many, many, many greenhouse gases, only a few that are counted in protocol, the ones that are most common and at the lower scale. Methane, carbon dioxide, disoxides are the most ones we count. And then I know the vast majority of the emissions that are causing climate change are coming from fossil fuels. That is, they were below the earth's crust for most humans' existence and the living carbon cycle was in balance. And whatever CO2 came out got absorbed. And then once we started digging stuff up from below, burn it and adding it to that system, we've unbalanced the living car cycle. Okay, next slide, please. So this picture makes the atmosphere look a lot thicker than it is, but it's useful to see in that there's this layer around the edge of the earth that fills with those greenhouse gases. And rather than letting the light reflect off the planet and go back up into space and some of that heat is trapped in the atmosphere and that atmosphere is about seven miles up the surface or about the height of cruising altitude jet if you're doing interstate travel. So around thirty-five thousand feet, that is the limit of the atmosphere. I think most people think the atmosphere is much deeper, but it's actually the thinest closest to the earth. Next slide, please. Okay, how did we get here? The sad truth is this co code development of us having technology and industrial revolution and fossil fuels that made things more efficient, more productive, gave us more stuff, this more stability, made our lives safer, made us warmer, and it also made us have more children. So we had a long, slow rise to the one billion mark in eighteen seventy. And since eighteen seventy, we've gone up to seven and a half billion people. And those two things are directly correlated. If we didn't have comforts and the survival rates that the industrial revolution induced, we wouldn't have this population. And if we didn't have population buying ever more stuff and using more fuel, we wouldn't be here. So it's a feedback loop that's going up in the wrong direction. Next slide, please. All right. So how do we know that the temperatures are changing? Basically because there's enormous data sets all over the world tracking the same thing that correlate. Whether it's ice core data, whether it's the Navy checking on their elevations at tides, whether it's the temperature gauges being recorded around the world in the last hundred and fifty years. Wherever that data is, the dam curds, the snow records, it's in a million faces and it tells one story. And that's that until now, we're moving up higher and higher in concentration and temperature. The next slide will show you something pretty interesting. So one of the questions we always get is those temperature changes within a natural cycle. And actually our natural mega cycles that we've been living through that have increases in atmospheric concentrations of C two and the other greenhouse gases that mean warmer temperatures. But in the history of humanity, or you look back the last eight hundred thousand years, we haven't really gone above three fifty. But all of a sudden, in this last hundred years, we're way off that range anomalous from all of those cycles that were inside the living carbon cycle. And we're expect actually go so far off the rails up into the thousand nine hundred numbers that if we don't act, we're way beyond any historic precedent. So this is what the ice core samples and the longer term data tell us is yes, there are natural cycles. They've just been this extreme before. Next slide, please. Okay, this slide is very helpful to show all of the sources of emissions on the left that fill the atmosphere and cause global climate change. And then on the right, the natural systems that can absorb the CO2 that used to be in balance, but now can only take about forty percent of all of our mitts. So we know between oceans and ocean plants and terrestrial plants and soil that forty percent of all the carbon putting in the atmosphere, we can put back into the ground. Right now, we're being outrun by the emission sources. Our job more than anything is to turn off the emission sources first so that the natural systems can there work. All right, next slide. So future physical conditions. So what is this bringing to us? Okay. Let me take a moment to introduce this graphic and graphic is here to help people understand the relative friends of each one of these conditions. The main point here is if we do nothing, it'll be really bad. And if we act aggressively, be less bad. Or it might even be do possible, or the we have the ability to prosper. But we know that even with strong action, we can't get to where we day. So that's one takeaway is the do nothing scenario. No matter what, not end up in the same place. And we do a lot, still don't end up in the same place. So let's just talk about a few of these. In a summer precipitation, we'll see a slight decrease in summer precipitation. I, but it will be, sorry, that slight increase will be smaller if we do take action. In the growing sea length, we'll have a very long growing season if we don't take and we'll have a smaller growing season if we do take action. That sounds positive. We can talk about that in other ways to minute. Temperature, we start getting to a place where we haven't ever been here before in Oregon. Or we can keep to something that feels more like Northern California. Days over ninety, days over one oh five, those are really big deals. We know from the heat dome what happens when you get into those temperatures and we're trying to avoid those. Extreme fire danger also follows. And winter precipitation, the general rule is we're going to get more and intense storms, but the total from a precipitation will only go up a little bit over time. Next slide, please. So in twenty ninety, what would it feel like if we did nothing? And what is that? What is that actually going to be like? Going to be like Central Valley, California. So the Central Valley of California is a very warm, hot place, meaning because we irrigate it with water from far away. If anybody's been to Sacramento in the summer, then you understand what Twalton will be like in the future in the summer, unless we're taking that and we're all working to reduce those numbers of dramatically hot days. So this is one of those places where the previous thing showed the differences, but to say the difference between ninety degree days being six right now versus sixty is an enormous difference, right? That ninety degree temperature is a threshold that matters for human safety and for a lot of system operate. But then again, if we're working really hard, we can keep that to thirty. But this is the kind of thing we're talking about. We know it could get really bad. If we act, we can keep it in a range of tolerance. Next slide. Okay, so precipitation. So this looks like a, either a mood or a horse running with some dramatic eye mask on. But the thing to notice, the Twalton River is not showing where most of the thing will be because that's controlled by the Army Corps. Precept for Twalton won't change so much the snowpack loss because most of your water is coming from the coast range, which is not a snow based precipitation basin. So what we're seeing is that the small waterways are the ones that are threatening inside of city limits. And that's the stripe right through going to person's eyes from the horse's mane. And those, the accuracy of this is compromised if FEMA has not readjusted their maps. But you see in that dark purple is roughly the five hundred year flood plain and what you see in that that, that light purple is the hundred year flood plain. And the shorthand that I'd say is that that once in five hundred years flood event is more likely to be happening. And that that one to one hundred year flood event is now more like a century. And a reminder that Houston had two thousand year rain events in three days and then the next year had another thousand year rain. So that's what we're talking about here is not Houston, but we can't rely on the past. We know it's going to be more intense and we know we're going to have to deal with these, these figure events. Next slide, please. Okay, fire and smoke. I think we all have it in our memories of what this felt like. I don't know if, if you've experienced this since, but the other day I stepped outside a strong, warm breeze. And instead of saying, ah, summer's here, my first thought was, oh no, I hope this isn't a red flag day. Know if that brings up that kind of feeling for you folks. Those fires were very close to us last time. The thing is, if you look at this, the frequency and the scale of the errors is dramatically increasing. This is something that we really can't avoid. We can just lessen and we need to try and make sure that we do the kinds of things in our urban forest to stay safe. Okay, next slide. Public health and health hazards. Okay, so the public health there's, this is the boiling the frog part. This is the slowly turning the heat up is the conditions for human health and mental health are going to get tougher as we go into these conditions and as it changes. Again, it's not that people haven't lived to these conditions. It's that these conditions are moving. So unless people are moving and staying in the conditions they're comfortable with, there's a lot of change here. And that it's going to be perceived as sometimes very negative things and some of them will be because they're the first time we've dealt with it. Things like a dome where we have no cooling, right? Now we know need cooling. Or in Texas, they had the winter event and now they know they need more insulation. Right? It's these kinds of wake up moments. So we're having wake up moments with wildfire and we're having them with algae blooms in drinking water supplies or swimming holes or those kinds of things. And we're starting to see the disease ranges associated with animals and insects moving well. So over time, as these become to our area, we need to address them and it'll be a wake up call and then figure it out and we'll move on. People have lived with mosquitoes for a long period of time. It's just we haven't. That doesn't mean we can't learn from other folks, but again, as these are and they're new, they're events. Once we figure out handle them, they're just part of daily life. Next, please. Okay. So these series of maps basically show the stress of climate change in diff ways on gross domestic product by quantity. And what you'll see over time, this is at twenty ninety, assuming a non mitigation scenario. You'll see things like mortality going in the Southern United States, the cost of energy going up. We see violent crime increasing in the north, see property crime increasing in the north. We see a lot of damages happening in the south and we see economic growth going on up in the north in the Pacific Northwest. What stories tell you other than population migration overt? We're going to see an increase in violent crime, property crime, just as people are moving. And as there's low grade instability on the population, all swaths of it. And as people migrate, we're going to have the stress of that. But I do want to call your attention to the fact that if you look upper left for agricultural yields and you look bottom right, we see an increase in economic prosperity and agricultural prosperity. And that's because we've got a colder climate, getting warmer, getting more moderate, even if we have too hot moments. And we see the population base moving there and the economic growth. So there is a happy side, a yin to the yang here. And we know people have been all of the conditions that Twalton will see. It's really managing that transition and managing the emissions reductions to arrest the dramatic edges of the system change. All right, I think that's the last slide. Okay.
Yep, just trying my, trying to find my end button here. Sorry. Thank you, Josh. Not wrap it up now. So I mean, as we all know, the implications of climate change can be to take in. Not all of that is really great news for us, but like Josh said, there's things that we can do to make it better and learn to change with it instead of, you know, suffering because of it. So just wanted to thanks to the members of this council. We are pursuing a climate action plan to adapt to these changes and mitigate future harm. The project team will educate and engage with the Twalton community about can be done locally to address climate change. Some of our engagement for phase one of outreach includes tabling at Twalton in July, attending and providing information at Parks Department's summer concert series and meeting with the youth advisory council this July to discuss the plan and gather input on how they'd like to be involved as it's one of their top priorities to work on as well. We think that these engagement efforts will help play a foundation for a strong climate action plan that is both responsive to science that we just talked about and the conditions we expect to see as well as the needs of the Twalton community. And I think with that, we will open it up for discussion.
Thanks, Matty. Questions for Matty or Nick? Or Josh? That's for Brooks.
I'll just say something. I don't have a lot of questions. I thought that was a really comprehensive explanation and I'm glad that we're kind of on the same page. There's so many impacts. I mean, I'm going to definitely look at them, review it more because it's really global and a lot to take in. And I'm excited that we're going to be talking and doing community engagement. I'm curious. And I also want to say I really like the logo with the twotintee and the climate and all the little, so that's the first time I saw that and I think it's really great. So I have been, I feel like really been a privilege to be part of the committee and I just want to really thank staff, all the members of the committee for taking the extra time and being so diligent with the work on this. And, and thank you, Josh, too, for such a really informative, comprehensive beginning to the conversation and sort of setting the label for this work. I also talked to students and various different groups at the school, not just one, but I think three or four different groups are highly interested in this conversation. And I think it's just such an important way of thinking about all of us, but in especially where the, the future. You know, people are concerned. So thank you.
Other questions or comments? Katrus Sacco.
Thank you. I don't, I don't really have any questions. I want to say that I really appreciate this presentation, work being done, and I'm really looking forward to some tangible action items coming out of this work. And I really, you know, encourage our entire council and community to get behind these action items as it's just, it's a really scary story that we just heard. And I think it's going to all of us to make a change. So I really just told everybody to take this seriously and really take action. And I'm looking forward to hearing about what those action items are. So thank you for all the work done on this so far. I really appreciate it.
Are there any other questions or comments? I just have one, I guess is a combo question for Matty and Josh. So on the public outreach, one of my questions is, my primary question is, is there a different kind of outreach you're playing to the residential community, but business community? Because as we all know, we have significant traffic coming through the city. A lot are generated and starting in from our manufacturing industrial area. How do you plan on reaching out to the business section? And is there a different style you engage businesses into this outreach in the plan versus a resident?
Yeah, I'll start and then Josh, if you have anything you want to fill in, I'll pay you to do that. So yeah, definitely different outreach strategies for those two different groups. We are kind of thinking about it as like business community being part of that stakeholder group. And so this week, actually, we have on Thursday, our economic shifts meeting, but we've reached out to the business community to try to get them engaged on. So like Chamber of Commerce, for example, will be attending. And I'm not remembering off the top of my head others, but that's the group we're kind of targeting towards. And Josh made a really good point to me. There, the business community in general is usually not super like people don't think to reach out to them about these things. So for us, this is kind of a matter of planting seeds over time and making sure that we build those relationships and keep them in the loop and involved and invite them in. in the loop and involved and invite them in, um, to ensure that this is a successful plan that works for everybody. So, I don't know, Josh, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'd just say that uh, there's kind of two versions of public engagement that we have to get out there, whether it's residential or business community or just kind of community groups. One is the baseline knowledge, right? Bring everybody up. Here's what we know. And here's what we know about the future that we're trying to avoid and we're trying to make better. And here's what we know about our emissions and how to reduce it. And on the front end, it's, uh, with, with residential folks, it's more, okay, given that these are important, what do you need to make that happen? Right? Because we've, we've, in the early days in these caps, we'd go out and ask everybody for all their ideas. We'd have like four hundred and eighty ideas. You know, a hundred and fifty of them were exactly the same in different words. All that kind of thing. We'd sort through the pile and then we'd go out and try and figure out so many different actions. Well, over years of doing that, we know which ones have scale and which ones don't. So what we try and do is we try and bring the community conversation to where the scale is. And then we say, you know your place better than us. Tell us what we need to know and I'll give you an example. So on the adaptation side, Milwaukee heard from their community right away about flooding, that they wanted, uh, way, wayfinding signage when they bumped into the bridges of the waterways and high water events, they had to just close the bridge because it was safe. And so what, they, they knew that inside them, but when the community says, yes, we all got stuck there and we didn't know what to do. And we saw that event and we didn't even know where we could turn or go from there. That was huge, right? That's the community maturing our understanding of it. They knew that bridge was threatened, but they didn't know how soon they needed that up. And within half a year, they had signed up saying, this waterway periodically floods, here's the route. If you ever bump into it, here's where you're going to go. And they put those signs up saying flood, flood route. Right? Couldn't have been done if the community didn't say, we bumped into that, we didn't know what to do, we couldn't turn around, we didn't know if we were going to take a left or a right and how we could get to what's our. The other thing is when we say, here are the things that everybody can do in their business or in their home to reduce emissions is where do you need resources? Where do you get stuck? Right? What do you need information on? So we know the basics of what they can do, but then how they get to those is where we find the ma- what matters, right? It, instead of saying, do you think we should do aerobic digestion? Or do you think we should do, you know, gasification of wood or some weird technical question? We're saying, tell us what you need to know. And they might just say, how can I sign up for the offset gas? I've got gas, I'm not switching my furnace, what can I do about it? That's the place where we want to tell everybody, if you've got this, do this, right? And they, they help us see where we're blind and where we don't see what we don't see. And that's the beauty of the public engagement. So, so first you give them that base level of knowledge that we just shared with everybody here. You know, we can at least have a conversation. And then you start asking, what do you need to take action and how can we support you as a group or as an individual move forward? And that's what that public engagement is for. With businesses, it's always tough because it's so business specific, right? So part of our work is for communities, the other ones is for corporations and we look just at what they have and do the same thing to them. For some things, it's pretty easy. For things, it's very complicated. We're not talking, we're not going to tell manufacturers how to reduce their emissions on an incremental basis in their ingredient mixes of chemicals. But we may talk to them about what do you need if you're a distribution center? Over time, how are you going to support an efficient route making without providing congestion? How can we support you getting off fuel? You know, into a cleaner fuel and where can, where can we kind of team up our fleets or something like that? So that's the nature of those. It's, it's different, but it's educate first and then listen deeply. And then make your plan on what quality control they've done on their known goods. This is a pretty thorough answer. My apologies.
I like thorough answers. You nailed it. All right. Any other questions or comments on this subject? All right. So, uh, so what's next, Maddie? Uh, according to your timeline, we're moving on to.
Yeah, so we'll be doing the public outreach this summer. Um, and then we'll be wrapping up the greenhouse gas emissions inventory and bringing that back to you all to, uh, report out on what we found.
Looking forward to seeing some of the summer events now that they're, that they're coming back. All right. Thank you. Thanks, Josh, for, uh, remotely in here from Eugene. Have a good evening.
Take care, buddy. Bye bye.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, next item up is Parks Funding Workgroup Presentation Led by Ross, I think, right? Where's Ross? I see Rich. There's Ross. Okay. The screen just shifted around.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilors. Happy to be here tonight and return with some, some fantastic information, uh, as a result of some fantastic work by really dedicated community members that you'll meet presenting tonight. Um, joined, I'm joined by, uh, Rich Mueller, Park Planning and Development Manager. M R of our T-Park Committee. And Trevor Owens of Walnuts and Soccer Club. And so we're going to be talking tonight, of course, about parks funding and a potential parks funding package. So Rich is going to pull up the, pull up the slide deck here. We'll walk through some, some slides and share with you, uh, this. And as we just heard, uh, Tuolotin's changing and, and we're anticipating change over time. In such, and we've been asking, the ongoing question we've been discussing is, what, what the parks look like in the future in Tuolotin and what are those potential investment areas? And what is our community interested in potentially finding? And so, uh, we'll talk a little bit about that and, uh, get into details about the past conversation and the conversations that this, uh, fantastic committee, uh, do into. So our, our next slide, uh, we'll advance to the next slide. And this is just to kick things off. Funding sources and the different types of fund sources. System development charges being one of those. This, this explicitly for capacity addition, expanding capacity within our system. For new development paid for new, uh, parks for those coming into our city. And system development charges is one of those mechanisms. Utility fee, um, focused on life cycle placements, the investments we've already made. And as those investments and the infrastructure reaches the end of its life, we fee, we have that utility fee to fund the replacement. And the gr- the example, most recent example of this is the splash pad at, at Lake of the Calm. So that type of a funding source funds that type of replacement. And our operating budget, just really just focused on the regular makes an upkeep, the day-to-day maintenance of our system. And the last item is parks bond. These are the significant larger investments, the bigger bites, uh, that really make the meaningful, uh, investment in our future, future park system. And so that's just a quick overview of the different types of funding and what fund. And at our last meeting, April twenty fifth was the last time we discussed this work session. Mayor and Council, you, uh, direct have to, uh, form a, a committee to dive in. Using the data that we had been provided by the phone statistically valid phone survey, focus groups, the surveys that we've done, uh, and put some specifics to what we were hearing from our community members and done to specifically what types of projects, what funding is appropriate for potential parks package. Well, we had a fantastic group, as you can see on this slide, committee that, that, uh, spent quite a few hours discussing of that and, uh, some, some really knowledgeable folk in our community. Key stakeholders from, from very different areas in our community, uh, and very specific knowledge holders within our community that were able to, to, to share information among group. And, um, I'm going to pass it over now, uh, to Trevor Owens from Tuolotin Soccer Club. And Emma Gray, who will, who will continue through this, this, uh, presentation. And they'll share the fantastic work this community did.
Thanks, Ross. Appreciate it. Um, and to, uh, uh, my name's Trevor Owens. I have been with Tuolotin Soccer Club for about, oh, good lord, it's, I'm going on Twitter's now or so. I've been working with the Parks Department for a long time and I've, uh, I've always liked working with them. But to be, uh, involved in this was, um, absolutely my pleasure. So to go through this, Rick, the, um, the dates you see before you, the dates that we had in our meetings, um, explanation under each one of those. Wednesday, the twenty seventh, with the intention, I got to learn about a lot of people that I had no idea we had in this area. Um, and it was really, uh, it was really nice to see that, um, uh, one of my former soccer players from the high school. Cause I coached at the high school also. Uh, he was actually on the committee. Great to see him. Great to see everybody else that are, and, and learn about, uh, some of those other folks and, and what their priorities are. Because my priorities were pretty specific. Now, um, on Tuesday, five, three, the potential price were discussed. That would be us learning about all of the different things that could have put into the package or, um, that are possible. And we sort of discussed about what, uh, what those things were, what we wanted to do. The next couple of meetings were on project prioritization, which means that, uh, we went through everything and, um, it tried to figure out, um, what we thought be the best things to focus on for our community and for people that were represented here. And that was in taking in all of the information from, um, the research and the findings that we discussed on, uh, Wednesday twenty seventh as, as well as our own views on what we should have. It was on Tuesday, the tenth and the seventeenth. On Thursday, through, um, the package finalization and voted also on, um, what we felt was going to be the most appropriate package that we could bring to the council, Tuolotin, to make sure that we're, uh, uh, bringing the right things forward for the council.
I think I'm up. Um, thank you so much for that great, uh, encapsulation of our process. We got to that last meeting. Um, I'm Emma Gray, um, member of T-Rock, as Ross mentioned. Um, and I have the benefit of showing you kind of the crux of our work and what culminated from those many, many, um, meetings. The group really thoughtfully considered, um, not just, um, well, through the prioritization of those products, we, um, talked about lots of different packages at different levels. And this one that the group is bringing, um, to the council this evening and recommending. What you see here is a graphical representation of, um, kind of a high level version of this package covers. So what you'll see here are the six focus areas that should probably look a little familiar because the same focus areas that the research that Ross mentioned earlier in our presentation, um, indicated and highlighted were things that were really the most important to, um, members of our community, both individuals and businesses. And you'll notice on the left, that pie chart, um, for all six of those focus areas are covered well, quite robustly in this package, which is a twenty-five million dollar package, um, for a bond. As I mentioned earlier, the group discussed, um, packages of variables. And I'm hoping it might be useful to the council to understand that the reason the group ended up with the twenty-five million is that we felt, um, for a variety of reasons, uh, the group felt it allowed us to bestage taxpayer resources that we could cover the, the most number of important large-scale investment and, and bring the most benefit back to the community. The package that we recommend, um, projects that hit all the geographic regions of our community so that all individuals and businesses can be positively impacted by this package. And we also, we went back and forth a little bit on this, but we are bringing package and recommending a package that we do feel voters can support, um, based on the polling and the focus group reset, um, Ross also mentioned earlier. So as we move forward, we highlight a few specific, um, projects and you can deeper into these exact, um, monetary amounts. We thought it'd be helpful for you to see this high level, um, understanding of the total amount that the bond recommendation represents and then how it kind of breaks down into those focused areas and might look in terms of projects. The next slide, um, is an interesting one that I hope you guys will recognize those, um, priorities on the left-hand side. Those are the, um, visions and priorities that you all as a council have identified as your priorities. And so this little chart shows you how those focuses, um, from the previous slide and the package that the kids recommending aligns with those visions and priorities. And you'll notice that every single one of the visions and priorities is very well represented by the bond package that the group, um, has settled on and is recommending this evening and, um, really impact our community in some really vibrant ways. What we also noticed as a commu- as a committee, then that we talked a lot about is that in order to get our community really excited about a bond and really support the works, um, measures. It may be very helpful to, um, what we've been kind of colloquially referring to as signature or key projects. We want the flexibility, of course, the council wants the flexibility, um, to direct staff to do what's best for the city. But people get excited when they can really visualize things. So out of our many meetings, there emerged a pretty general consensus that were, there were three really exciting projects. And Trevor's going to talk about each of the briefly.
Thank you very much, Emma. You're so much better at this than I am. So the first one being, uh, River Access or New Access Portal. Um, I'm sure everybody has been down to Tuolotin Community Park and seen our driveway to the river. I think that's a big, uh, um, part of, uh, where this, this idea came from is that there's, there's not, uh, there's not a good look to that at this time. It doesn't have ADA access. We're trying to get that put into there. If you look at it in front of you, the turn in front of you is an artist's, uh, representation of what we can do, that space or another space if we are buying land to, um, create that. It's a great opportunity to people into, um, the community, uh, as visitors, just, uh, to the, uh, river itself. Opportunity for, uh, economic vitality to, uh, and those becoming into, uh, our community as visitors, spending money in our, in our stores, our shopping centers that are here. On top of that, I think one of the biggest points for me, I honestly, was the educational value that we have. If we have a place to go that has something like this artist, it is representation where, you've got the local fan fauna that are right there, um, on display in a way that it's, it's easy to manage or easy to visualize. Then you can also have field trips to go there. You can have kids there all the time. In this representation, you see that there's some kayaks and things. So the River Access, um, for using and utilizing our part of the river would be upgraded, you might say, from what we have right now. It, it's always nice for me, uh, playing at the Tuolotin Country Club. And I look across the river and I see the access, uh, that another city that's next to ours has. And that we don't necessarily have the same sort of thing. So right across the river is Cook Park. And that highlights, I think, uh, the need for Tuolotin to actually height our access to the river also. I believe it was the, some river keepers that were a big part of, um, getting the notation out to folks and getting some information from folks to, to talk about being a new River Access. Uh, the next one. The next slide being our, uh, trail connection. Um, I think everybody realizes the trails have always been, uh, high up on the popularity list. We use them across Tuolotin. We've been connecting across Tuolotin. For me, um, there were, were there are three things that really stood out, uh, when the group was talking about it. One of those was, um, getting the right connections, uh, to affect the most people. Connecting the east to the west side of, uh, Tuolotin, um, under, uh, the ass, for instance, under the freeway. Um, and then, um, on top of that, um, talking about next gen, uh, transportation methods. Electric vehicles, electric bicycles, electric, uh, scooters and things like that. Those are the really stood out. Um, those are that really stood out to me for our trail connections. Um, as a person who uses the trail right by my house every day, um, uh, sort of thing would be great to be able to do to, to take a, a trip going right from my house all the way across the river. Um, getting to, uh, can, to the, uh, shopping centers on the other side of the river. That'd be great by, uh, Atulati Park. Um, I don't have that right now. Well, I do, so I just don't do that yet. The alternative, uh, the alternative transportation is also very interesting to me because, because if we can connect these pathways, I don't have to take a, um, a car to work anymore. I can probably take, uh, you know, electric vehicle of some sort. Um, but that's the real trail connections and making sure that we, um, uh, are connecting both sides of our, uh, community. Um, and then, uh, the next slide would be the athletic fields and this I can definitely say is where my expertise in the area might come in, um, because I've with our parks program for a long time. Um, and I've also worked, um, the, uh, TTSD for a time in scheduling fields, making sure fields are taken care of and things like for our kids. Unfortunately, uh, even with COVID and the pandemic coming through, we have had a distinct downturn, say, in the availability of park and, and the large space access and athletic field access for our kids. Um, part of that is because we haven't invested a lot, whereas many communities around us have invested a lot. Um, and part is because, you know, um, the school district has changed some of their schedules. Um, there's lots of reasons for it. The gist of what I'm getting at here is that we have a lot of kids like to play and who would like to play all the time and we don't have space right now. But the, um, what we hate now is an opportunity in the, um, memorandum of understanding, as I, as I'm sure, uh, you guys know about from Ross, um, that three entity memorandum of, of understanding is going to create a system that I think is the most beneficial, um, to our community. Specifically because it creates time and more opportunity for kids to get out and play, more opportunity for fast to get out, um, and socialize with each other and make those connections. And, um, you know, it, it really people into our community. Uh, right now, we cannot do that. Uh, we cannot use most of the, um, fields. Um, but those school fields could be used if we put a little bit of work into them. And I think that's what we're talking about in this, this three entity package. It's going to be very big, very beneficial, large swath for our community, which is, uh, in my opinion, gets, it's going to be great for us. It's very low, um, low, uh, overhead, we don't have to go out and buy land. The land already exists and, um, three into the process that we're going to go through will make scheduling for that and then, and now, uh, upgrading those fields much easier for us. It's the best thing that I've heard, uh, from Ross or anybody else in the department for a long time, in my opinion. And I believe that's the next slide.
Trevor has highlighted some of, uh, the projects that we as a committee really wanted to prioritize. Because of their visibility, because they're very popular with us and they have a very broad appeal to many, many different groups. Uh, however, we also wanted to highlight two projects which are very familiar to council. Um, because they are A, important and B, one of the reasons that the committee really strongly about choosing the twenty-five million dollar bond recommendation as opposed to the next level down that was slightly lower. The first is represented on this slide, Stone Ridge Park. Um, I will say of these projects also reper- already represent a very large investment by council in both money and energy and community reach and goodwill to community. So our hope as a committee is that if we are able to pass a bond at this level and complete these projects, it is a huge realization of funds and resources that have already been expended. Not to mention the fact that they are important to community. Stone Ridge Park would be an upgrade to an existing park in one of our community's, um, most populous dense areas and, uh, most diverse is. It is an equity, um, commitment come to pass. We are able to, to finish this project as well as it was pointed out to me during my participation in this communit- uh, this committee that it actually also transportation issues as well, because people will be able to use the upgraded Stone Ridge Park as, um, a connection point between, um, two S. So this is a really important project that many of us on the committee feel very strongly about seeing come to pass. The next project, similarly, the Veterans Plaza is a project that, um, a lot of effort has been expended and people, um, feel is very important to, uh, to our community. Um, we won't go back to that original slide where you can see all little dots that, um, align with the city council visions. But if you look in your packet at that upgrades area, um, which is where Veterans Plaza and Stone Ridge Park, um, are fitting in, you'll see, uh, a number of little icons for upgrades that align with city council priority. So even though these may not be the projects that, um, are the banner projects that the entire committee rallies around, um, maybe they should be. Um, we think they're really important and so we wanted to ensure that you, that, that we highlighted that it was not a small thing for us to include these and the recommendation funding level that we need to council tonight, um, allows us to realize, uh, potentially the completion of these important. Uh, with that, I think I'm turning it back over to the wonderful Ross Hoover to talk a little bit more about the financial details of what this bond recommendation would like for voters.
Thank you, Emma. Thank you, Trevor. Thank you, committee members, uh, that, that really spent a lot of hours doing work. And I see several, uh, committee members on this call, um, that are not speaking tonight, so thank you. So what you heard from her and Emma, um, is the product, is the recommended to you council at your direction. And so the next, uh, point of this conversation is to talk about what potential costs and then how, what this might look like in terms of timeline. Um, so the, the bond cost projection slide, Don Highness Director just updated these numbers. We are at a twenty-five million dollar bond package. Uh, at a rate of, of twenty-nine, approximately twenty-nine cents per, per thousand of assessed value and an average of three thousand assessed value. Uh, the monthly cost to, uh, tutors would be seven dollars thirty-two cents per month or eighty-eight dollars annually. And, um, and so these are, these are numbers that are bond projections. There, there are a lot of, um, moving part and, in, uh, in bond, uh, us. So, so this is as of, as of, well, really last, we's numbers are very fresh. So, and then, um, on the net, we can talk a little bit about, um, sort of next step and where we're at on this timeline. This is a timeline we presented previously at the April twenty-fifth meeting. Um, and we have been adjusting this as continued along this process and this conversation. So we're here at June thirteenth, tonight, City Council work, work session. Um, in order to propose or present two potential pathways. Um, City Council, if you wanted some more information, some more data specific to this particular package with these specific, specific, um, marquee or, or signature project, uh, they're sort of too past to gauge, uh, community interest or level of support for, uh, the specific details. Uh, one option would be a, uh, a telephone survey, a statistically valid survey that we've done in the past. That survey would potentially could start this week if you so desired. Um, our consultant Bonnie and Barney and Worth, um, are prepared to conduct a survey if you, if you desire this week. We bring that data back to you and we would test the specific signature project you heard presented tonight along with the total, uh, bond and the specific, um, uh, rate, tax rate per thousand. Uh, we would test all of that information survey. That's the, the, the quantitative data pathway, um, would be the phone survey. A more qualitative, all the approach would be the focus group approach and that conducted on June thirtieth. Um, that would not, um, produce the statistically valid, but would produce qualitative information back to you. Either path could present, we would present that, that data or the findings back to, um, at a future meeting. You can see from there, pretty rapid succession, July, there would need to be a, a draft ballot title. And then August, um, would require City Council act if the desire was to have, um, the November eighth election day to have a potential parks bond show up on the ballot. Um, this would be the timeline, uh, for, for that. So with that, we are, uh, here to answer any questions. Um, and, um, Trevor and Emma, I'm sure are, are more than willing to share sort of their insights and their participation in this committee. Uh, and again, uh, extremely for the commitment to, to this work from, from our community and our key stakeholders, uh, in this process. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ross. Uh, questions for Ross and his team, Counselor Pratt? Go ahead, Counselor Pratt. You're muted. Counselor Pratt?
Maybe?
Coming out?
Yes! Sorry, I'm using my phone. I'm having technical difficulty. Well, first I want to thank this group. It looks like you had a lot of meetings and, um, you know, in my opinion, you've held the, the biggest needs of our community. And, um, my one question, I guess, for you is when you, um, pick the amount for each thing, I noticed like the, um, sports, which are a big need, got allocated quite a bit more than the other areas and I'm just, um, wondering how you, um, decided on how much went to each different need? And, um, if you think, uh, I guess my only concern is like how many voters, do we, likely voters, do we have that, um, have kids understand the importance of the need for sports fields in our community?
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, so there was a, uh, pretty thorough process. The committee, uh, walked through different potential packages at different levels for each of, each of the categories or theme areas that, that you saw, the six theme areas that you saw presented. Um, and so, um, through, through that discussion, through informal voting that we did, uh, in our meetings, we had, we had some fun with our, our voting and, and, uh, that was the resulting, that was the resulting, uh, total amounts by, by theme or category type. Now, the specific, um, dollar amounts were arrived upon largely through, uh, previous work we've done in, in cost estimating various projects throughout our city with our Parks and Recreation System Plan, uh, and the costing that we had done through that process. And so that's where, that's where those dollar amounts came from.
Okay, and then I, I just want to clarify when, uh, you're sampled that, um, Dawn, you used assessed value and it was like a three hundred thousand and I think uh, most of us that own homes, oh, yeah, right. But that's assessed value that's got the limit on, right? Not the real market value, which is what you could sell it for tomorrow. Is that correct?
That, that's correct, Counselor. Assessed value and market value are two, um, different numbers.
Okay, and then, um, just last, um, I'll just say it now so I can let someone else talk that, um, I would really like to see a phone survey just because we're in such a high inflation time. I'd really like to see if we have the support to move this forward.
Other questions, comments? Counselor Sacco?
Thank you. Um, I just want to say, um, thank you, Ross, for reminding us about the different funding sources. Um, because it really helps, um, keep top of mind and, and helps us understand, helps me understand, I should say, how important a parks bond is and why it's important to have different funding sources, um, as different funding sources can be utilized for different projects. Um, so I think that's just really important for us to keep top of mind. Um, and I was part of this group and, and actually, I mean, I, we've been working on parks bond uh, from T-Park perspective for a very long time. So I've been involved for a very long time and as this, this, um, most recent conversation got brought up, um, I was afraid, um, that it was going to be Beth Ditman and I, just the two of us knocking on doors until I came to this committee um, that Ross put together and there's such a large group of people that are so passionate about parks um, that I have no question in my mind that we could pass a twenty-five million dollar, um, bond um, from the groups of people that, um, the committee members that, um, again, I came into this a little skeptical after hearing Trevor, Emma, the Riverkeeper, um, representatives. Um, we heard from, uh, the business community, we heard from some people representing, um, the aging population and there's a whole group of people out there that benefit from our parks and, um, I was very, uh, invigorated by being part of this community and, and hearing, um, just the support uh, that, that our parks have. Um, and I really love this package because it came from a place where we really looked at an equitable package. Uh, you heard about, obviously, we know about Stone Ridge and the Veterans Memorial ADA conversations. Um, so I think it comes from a really good place and it represents a lot of our community members. Um, I also think it has a really great, um, look at, um, Trail County, which transportation is a huge issue in Talton, as we all know, and that trail connectivity helps with that issue. Also, we just about climate action and that trail connect, connectivity helps with, uh, with our changing climate. Um, and, uh, last couple of things I'll say is one thing I was worried about is a timing issue um, with a bond. Um, however, the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost us. Um, the farther in disrepair, um, our, our parks are going to be and, uh, increasing costs for everything, materials, labor, it's just all going to cost us more in the end. Um, so I, I really think that we need to consider um, investing, uh, as a community, investing now versus later. Um, and that eighty-eight dollars annual, I know, um, to some people may not seem like a lot and others, it does. Um, but I still want people to consider, um, you know, that breakdown of, uh, seven dollars and thirty-two cents monthly and what we get, what the community gets for that. And a lot of that, um, the parks do serve our, our under, um, represented communities. Um, so I think it's very important, um, a very important bond and I hope, uh, you all consider supporting it. Sorry to have long-winded, thank you.
Not a problem. Other questions or comments? Counselor Brooks?
Um, I just want to thank everybody, um, all the members of the, the committee. I, you know, funny, this week, um, or this last week, since the last time we met, I attended a couple of very meaningful events. Um, one was Blender Dash where we had over the largest amount of kids I think that's ever attended that event. I have my scarf on, um, and was just thrilling to see how much people enjoy our parks. The other event that I was at was the, I, I got to cut the ribbon for the National Parks and the Ice Age Trail um, visitor center that's going to be located at our library, which is also about connectivity and trails. And, um, I'm going to say those communities were diff- oh, and we also did the Memorial Day um, celebration in our park. Um, and talked with, uh, different members and veterans that were very interested and hopeful around our Veterans Park um, and hopeful that, that we would make some movement on it. Um, one member was talking about Celebrating their ninetieth birthday and wanting to see something, you know, soon. Movement soon while they're here and they can see it. So when I think of our littlest ones to our elders. In the last just two weeks and how much our parks are used. To me, it's, there's no question in my mind about the diverse needs at our parks and how much our community loves our parks. And every single person that wants to volunteer for a county says it's their favorite part about our community. And I also think it's good for our business community as well. And I also want to say when we were on the water tour of the Upper. Twelton River. They were talking about the recreation. We saw people out recreating that had doubled during COVID over by Hag Lake. And I was asking them, Washington County, if they could think about countywide, all the way down through the whole. Twelton River. So I just think there's a lot to, a lot to think about our parks. I just want to be very grateful to this committee for the diligent work. I am very open to this conversation and I also. Think that. Just from a business perspective and a value, home value perspective to to remember to that. You know, if if we let our parks fall into disrepair, it affects all of our property values. And it affects how people feel when they come to our community and how they feel when they, you know, live, work, and play here. So those are the things that I come away with when thinking about this. And I really appreciate the the conversation. I think it's a very, very important conversation. And central to the health and livability and viability of our community.
I guess our Counselor Pratt Grimes hand up.
Thank you all so much for that presentation. It was absolutely fantastic. Both the information that was there and presentation skills. Thank you, Emma and Trevor and Ross. Was brilliant. And it's very indicative of the amount of time and effort that went into that committee. Was very thorough, very well thought through. Obviously, I was very impressed. I don't think anybody can argue with the fact that. The bond is needed. The projects are very important in many ways to community. And very much needed. I agree with Counselor Pratt. I would love to see a telephone poll. Not a telephone poll, a poll done via telephone to to get a sense of. The community's thoughts about a bond, because I know there's has been a lot of discussion about inflation currently. As well as a possible recession next year. And I just want to kind of take the temperature of the committee, see what their thoughts are. Because I I do think this is very important and has an enormous amount of merit. And I would not want to take it to the public and the expense of that process and. See it not get the support I think it deserves. So I would be very. In favor of seeing that. And then based on how that comes back, possibly sort of workshopping it through some focus groups if needed. Based on what the telephone survey looks like. And then I had two specific questions. The first one is. Because we're doing the work with TD right now for like shared fields and opportunities. How does that factor into this bond and the field program? Is there? If somebody could help me that part. And then my second question is, when does the transportation bonds sunset? When does, I can't remember right now off the top of my head, when the when the transportation bond will be done and expired? And if there is overlap between this proposed bond and that, how long would it be? Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Counselor. So so yes, the TTSD partnership and the MOU that's signed by the three parties. The development of that long-term operations agreement is underway. Our intent is to conclude that work. By next year to have an IGA in front of each body by next school year. That would then solidify that long-term relationship. If there was, for some reason, the the park didn't agree to sign that IGA. The school district is interested even in a in a one-by-one considerations by school where investment can take place. So I think there's a pathway regardless of an IGA, but all all signs at the staff level is that that works progressing. And at the staff level, that those conversations are productive. And and so I would anticipate we'll be bringing that back to you for consideration. Additionally, those dollars, those potential bond dollars for parks could be used, not not exclusively at school district sites. But also at city sites. And so it could, it could look something like dollars spent at at city school district facilities. And then and then your second question was in regards to the the sun setting of the transportation bond. So that was passed in two thousand nineteen, Sherilyn.
Dawn is on the line.
Yeah, I see Dawn, thank you.
So the bond was sold in twenty, the last fiscal year of that bond will be twenty twenty eight. If the, if we go out for a parks bond and it were passed in November, we would sell in the early part twenty twenty three. So the projection, the numbers I have from our financial advisor, there'd be a five-year overlap before this bond and the existing bond.
Okay, thank you.
And then in in just a piece of information in terms of of polling or statistically valid surveys, you know, we had, we have done. It's statistically valid survey on on a parks bond. What was, if we wanted to proceed with a a additional statistically valid surveys. What this would be, how this would be different is it would be exclusive to this very specific information. And so the survey would be, would be just about this twenty five million dollar package and the signature projects. Engage specifically in this in this one package.
Okay, perfect. And I believe Emma, when she was the presentation, spoke about some of like. Their recommendation of like marquee projects would be, is that the same that we saw tonight? So Stone Ridge. The the waterfront and the Veterans Royal, do you think those would be the three we lead with on our telephone survey? Or is that something we we should discuss?
Yeah, so so the three, the three projects, the committee had. Pretty, pretty clearly identified that that rose up from this bigger bucket of projects. There were three that really rose to the top, yes, signature projects. One, a new river access point that creates a new main access point for the Twelton River. That connects to all its families to the river and nature and becomes a community gathering space and attracts there's the downtown and local businesses. So that's. That would be one. Project two would be Trail Connection, constructing a new east-west trail corridor away from streets. That is an action along Nightbird Creek across from the, across our community and helps to get around Twelton off right of way. And then the third would be sports fields and improving and expanding the sports field. Citywide, both through a partnership and on city fields that improve lighting, would improve turf, that would make better, safer, playable fields. Then fields that can be used year round. So that's generally what we would test in a statistically valid phone survey.
Okay. Thank you so much. And my questions are just questions. I just want to make sure that everyone knows. I think this work was brilliant. I love it. And if we go out to bond, I'll be walking around handing out leaflets. So, great work, you guys. Thank you. Genuinely, thank you very much. Well done.
Counselor Hillier, I see your hand up. I see you in two different pains here. The live view and it's the live view.
I don't know how to agree with the other one, I'm sorry. Seemable, it could be a worry. Anyway, thank you for the great presentation. It's super exciting. I guess my question is, please remind me, Dawn or someone, what is our, did you choose three hundred thousand dollars? Is that the average cost of a home in Twelton? Is that why you're using number? I feel like. That doesn't pertain to my neighborhood necessarily, so those numbers are a lot, you know, different. And so I'm curious why that number and.
That's the average assessed value in Twelton. Obviously, we have more than higher and lower, but that is last numbers I ran, that's the average assessed value in.
Okay, thank you. And remind me too, I think we're looking at other braided funding to to look at Stone Ridge and the Veterans Memorial. And so how does that play in with the dollars and that sort of thing, please?
Thanks, Counselor. Yeah. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Dawn.
No, I, if you want to take answer, I'll let you go ahead and start.
Yeah, yeah. So 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 the the packages, the package does include funds for both. Both the Stoners Project and for Veterans Plaza. And and so, yes, this would, this fund, those projects in a in a significant way. The ARPA funds would may need to come into play depending on on some of the cost estimate as the. The design for Veterans Memorial, the Veterans Plaza, as you know, is not completed yet. And so that the fund could kick in and augment or supplement any bond dollars.
Any other questions, Counselor here? All right. I see Emma's head ran up for a little bit. Is that still up or?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to thank everybody for their really thoughtful questions and just reinforce a couple of things. From the deliberations of our committee so that you guys can really confidently move forward. We did not all come to our experience that the committee convinced that the time for this bond was this November. But by the end of our work, as Counselor Sacco hinted at. We all came to feel very confident that the time was now. And that even amongst the members of the committee that were very representative of our community. And all had very different high priorities and all sort of came around to the same consensus of what we've presented tonight. That we have votes in our community to support this. Absolutely appreciate this sense that. Conditions may not be exactly the same economically today as they were that the last time the polling data was given. It also may not be the same in November and we may always be behind data. So of course, we respect any action that the council takes tonight, but I just wanted to put one last plug in that. A lot of the work that we did was based on the significant, this is significant polling and research that you all invested in here. And we, as a group, feel really excited and confident that we can. Hit the streets and drum up the support that that we know our community needs for these really valuable resources. Thank you so much for letting us bring that work to your desks.
Counselor Reyes?
Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. I I actually feel. I I respectfully disagree with Emma. I feel like things are a lot different now than they were even two months ago, three months ago. I I feel like I I I do want to make another effort to do the phone call. Not the phone call, but. Counselor President said, have that best bet. Just in the last couple of months, I've met many people within my community who are struggling. More than ever with gas prices gone up, food gone up, just in the last two months. And I and I think that's, that's going to take a huge, that's going to be very hard for people to. To think about this. Remember, a lot of my people rent, and so rent does go, I mean, dramatically high in in. In a lot of the communities of, you know, who speak Spanish or Latino communities or whether it's housing, Muslim and rent. And what happens when that, when this, when rent goes up, they have to move even south of the area. Because, so Wilburn or Salem, because of rent's a lot cheaper. So now they have to. And it's just really they have to measure all those things. So I. I want to see, and I agree with the other ones who, the counselors who suggested the phone call survey. Because I want to hear what people are saying now versus two years, two months or three, four months, five months ago. And and I think it's going to be a lot different. Fifty percent, it's not enough to get us there. Fifty percent can, if if we push it and it's not, it's not the right time. What's going to happen is that next time it's going to be really hard to push it again, get those signatures again. So. I'd rather do it right. And I'm all for a bond. I'm like, really, this is the solution we need. And I would also go out there and knock on doors. I I would do it. I have no problem doing that, but I feel like. Me, I need to have that security that it's a little bit that we that we got. Last survey, phone call, poll, whatever it is that we need to do. I feel that way strongly and. And I just feel like we're making it really hard to live in Twelton with rent. Like I said, most of my people. Rent owning property and so. They, it just goes traumatic, like every, every time they they have to renew a lease. And those of us who have a house is different. We we think about the property value and, you know, but. Lose, we we will lose a lot of my community people. And I think that that's what changes schools affects the children with. You know, now they have to go to their school. And I I feel like. It's not, I feel like we need to be very careful. It's exciting, it's wonderful, but. I don't know, I don't feel secure. It's the right move and that this is going to pass if we push them. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's everyone, right? Counselor Brooks?
Well, I just have a question because Counselor Reyes makes up a good point. Can we talk a little bit about how? Bonds affect people that rent? Because I don't feel like I'm clear on that.
I I could take a crack at the answer to that. So the property owner would pay the the bonds. It's a cost of doing business. The they would likely then pay on a portion of that into the rent. Because it's, they're looking at covering all their costs by set the rent, rent. So it wouldn't be that it's, you know, one-to-one per se. I don't know what that would be, but it, the property owner is going to get, going to pay it. And they're going to pass it on and whatever, they pass on the rest of their property tax bill.
Can I finish mine?
Say, yes, yeah, yeah, sorry.
So so my, so I guess the question I have on that is. You know, if I was a landlord and I had a property, the, my property assessed value. Is based on the. The whole building or based on units?
It's it's the assessed value of the building as a whole.
Okay, so I think that's just a good piece to understand, right? So because there's, there's a way of separating that out. So the impact. I think it's important to think about, and I think that you probably could do it better, or somebody else could speak to it better, but. Just like when we think about market value and how home and assessed value, that assessed value is actually lower than market value. So people think, oh, my house is worth more than three hundred thousand, but your assessed value says a a different thing. And I think that understanding that income property for one whole building instead of. um I mean, real property and assessed value is a whole building where income property um is looked at unit by unit. So it it's less than than what we would think as far as what the um deferred prices be that would be given over to the the renters. I'm not saying there's no cost, but I just wanted to be in a realist conversation around what those costs really are as people think about, think through it instead of imagining what they are, um what the real costs really are.
Counsel Reyes.
Yeah, I thank you, Counselor Brooks. I would like to, okay, Frank, like to hear an example of that. So for instance, fifty dollars, it's fifty dollars to some people means fifty dollars different. For me, it's something uh, those who get paid minimum wage, fifteen dollars an hour. So uh even if cost goes up fifty dollars, remember, people are thinking, you know, what is survival to them? Okay, that's what I keep thinking. I keep saying this. What is a survival? Roof, food, and they want a job so they can buy roof and food over their, you know, on their table. So I think that the perspective of sometimes saying, thinking of like, oh, it's only fifty dollars. Well, yeah, now you're you're, it's fifty dollars is different from me than it is for somebody that's making minimum wage or someone that's living. So I I have to also think that way um because we didn't like oh, every, I just want to say everything adds up, everything. And and um I just, I'm feeling it. I put gas and it was a hundred dollars. I was shocked. And eh I feel like getting really, uh I I just want to see some 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 feedback from the phone calls or whatever we do, a survey now at times that we're living versus two, three, three, five months ago. That was, that should give us a little bit of what the people are thinking now versus what they were thinking five months ago or six months ago. I think that it will be, or even last year, um it will be a different way of seeing things. And um when things go up, we, I don't know, I just feel like we're pushing people out of Twelton whenever things, you know, when we, the wrinkles up, people are just saying, okay, you know, this is too much. I can't live. Have to go to Wilburn, have to go to Salem, can be, or or little, or even smaller towns than that. So I feel like that's, that's not helping the people either, that we're trying to provide a part pushing them out of here, out of the city.
All right. Other questions or comments? All right, so it sounds like uh, oh, Counsel Pratt. No, all right. So it sounds like uh pretty much all the, I have two questions before I go with this. So Dawn, don't go away, Dawn.
I tried to sneak out with.
Ross didn't mention, what's the for this bond?
It's a twenty year bond.
Twenty year bond, okay. Because twelve to moving forward was a twenty year bond. I'm sorry, twelve to moving forward, a ten year bond. Okay, thanks. All right. Um Ross, so you mentioned, I, you know, option two, whether you should exclusive. Why couldn't we do both as far as telephone survey and focus groups?
So we, yeah, it's fair. We certainly could do that if if that's what um you desired, counsel. The um the the data from a, uh like I mentioned, the data from a statistically valid phone survey is is a quantitative uh data. The the focus group is more qualitative. So um wh- what I, um, yeah, and that's clearly up to you. How do you like to proceed? With with either one or or both of those different tools?
Like Counsel Reyes is saying, I'd be, I want to be super confident this will succeed. I think we all do. We did, we did very thorough research on Twelton Moving Forward to get to a a number that all seven of us agreed on. So I'd like to see that happen again here. So in mind, you know, hedge your bet, if you will. I'd rather have bullies done the telephone survey and focus groups done so that we can make sure this, you know, we're gonna get the support. We're envisioning that Counselor Sock thinks we're gonna get despite, you know, where our economy is right now. So um how do people feel about that, doing both of these things in terms of research, Counsel Pratt? I just gotta flip to your phone. Can't hear you. Write it on a note and put it in front of the camera.
You can put it in the chat.
There you go. Or uh.
She was just there.
All right. Other while we're waiting for Counsel Pratt, Counsel President Grimes.
I, um, Mr. Mayor, I think that that's a great idea to do that because it it does make me nervous, and I don't think we're ever gonna say more information is better than less information or worse. Man, I got this telephone poll problem, and I haven't recovered from that. I think more information is a better thing. Let me put that that way. Um, I'm sitting in my office at home, and I pulled out my property tax statement um from last year, and I was just kind of like looking at some of the extra add-ons that, you know, people get hit with, the Twelton Bond, Community College Bond, Community Public Safety Bond, the TBFNR Bond, the the school bond for Tiger Twelton School Districts, and the Metro Bond. I mean, that alone is eighteen hundred dollars. And, you know, when we keep looking at everything as, well, this is five dollars, seven dollars a month, or eleven dollars a month. But, you know, accumulative ends up being a lot. So and this Parks and Rec Bond, for lack of a better term, I think is just so important for our community. I just want to make sure that, like, we keep stepping forward with our best foot forward. And yeah, the more we do polling, um focus groups, I mean, anything, I think it's better. You know? I think it's important. So thank you, Frank.
Sure. Can we hear you now, Valerie, or no?
She's still be having a technical difficulty. She did put in the chat that she feels that the committee already did the qualitative work.
But was it based on this package? This package, I'm I'm super zoning in on the package of twenty-five million. The focus group didn't, wasn't simply focused on these collection of projects, if you will.
That's correct, uh, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, uh, the 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 initial focus group was um broader than a specific package.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to be very specific to this. Will this, is the support for this package here versus something else? Because this is something that people can see, what's the impact gonna be on my property tax? Like Counsel President Grimes is gonna say, uh, you know, these projects, things I can support, I can live with. And then looking around economically like Counsel Reyes says, you know, can I afford this? So I think that's, again, that's my thought is do both of these because it can't hurt.
As Graham said. Right. More information is better.
Okay, my quiz, um, so I'm for the phone survey. The additional work I'm not sure about. My concern is about time, and I just want to hear from uh from someone if um if this seeds. So I feel like we have two things that would make it successful. One is the enthusiasm of this committee and people that are willing to get up and support the bond um in time. So for them to have the time to do it, um, is is Valerie on now? Is that you, Valerie? Do you want to ask, why don't you ask your question and I'll go?
Yeah, we can hear you.
We can hear you now. You go ahead, and I'll come back.
My my point is this group that's speaking to us tonight, I feel like they've done the qualitative data and come down to the projects we need and everything. So um I feel like we're duplicating our efforts by having another group. Did you hear that?
You heard it, yeah.
Okay, and then and and but then on the phone, um, I do want to just be sure because if we put this out, it doesn't pass, and that's gonna delay us being able to try again. So I want that extra level of confidence to move forward. That's it.
Hey, I might, I just throw out one uh other potential option is to do a uh two-step process rather than commit to both uh statistically valid phone survey and a qualitative focus group is to, uh, one other option could be just do the the phone survey now. And if that is, uh, i- if the results of that are um that you still desire more information, then to proceed with a focus group rather than commit to both of this. There are cost implications to adding the focus group as well.
Yeah, I I agree. But Counsel Reyes refers to the last statistically valid pho- uh phone survey only garnered fifty percent support, which that, and to me, at that point, Counsel Reyes says, no, it's not gonna move forward. So it makes sense not spend time focus group. So that's a valid suggestion, Ross, that, you know, look at what happens from the survey and that help us determine if we do the focus group or not to kick it over the, you know, the finish line, if you will.
Can I finish mine? I'm with that, and I also think it will maybe give pe- people more time too if it, if we get a positive result. Because to me, um, this looks more enticing than the last one. It's very focused. Uh, it's a different number, and I recognize there's a time. And and the other thing I I really want to put it out there on is, because I don't feel like I ki- kind of got the the answer, is for um understanding what it looks like for rental properties. Maybe somebody could shoot us uh some information in email or something like that. I know that it might not be a question that was prepared for. I'd like to have a better understanding because I think there's two pieces around this. And um I also think access to free parks instead of be charged and all this stuff that could happen if we just keep on with deferred maintenance um is access for ki- people that are from uh families that rent. So especially families, kids that need exercise and uh activities. So I just want to understand that picture a little bit better. I feel like I understand it from a homeowner perspective pretty well, but I don't understand it from a lower income perspective that well, as far as my own um understanding of bonds. Thank.
Cheryl, you gonna say something?
Well, I I was just gonna reiterate it. This is a different number. The one that we served on before was at a forty million dollars. So this would be on a twenty-five million, and it would be specific to an amount per thousand. I will say to your um question, Counselor Brooks, we can put our heads together about um answer that. But it is dependent on the landlord, how they they um pass those costs along. So that's gonna be variant by by landlord, not necessarily a, you know, a a property owner. Which that's much more specific. We understand the mechanism for that. But um how different landlords handle different ways, but we can put our heads together and try to come up with with some kind of high-level answer to that.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
All right. So it sounds like we're all on board with this, the phone survey. And are we in consensus that we won't automatically kick in the focus group, but wait until the results of the phone phone survey to see if we need further clarification to find in the package and get it to where, like, was super important with moving to Walton Ford. That we had seven counselors. It was not easy to get Twelton Moving Forward on the ballot because we wanted all seven counselors to be in support. So there was a lot of going back and forth like we're doing now. I'm, you know, putting together the dollar mind and the project list that would occur. So uh so it sounds like, it's like based on the thumbs up, that Cheryl, let's go ahead and do the phone survey and then come back with the results and then that will either decide uh one or two things. Do we just, you know, do we move forward in November or sometime in the future? Or do we want to make doubly down short that this will pass and do one additional focus group on the set of uh projects? Is that right? All right.
Thank you for that direction. We'll move post haste.
All right. Thank you. All right, that brings us up to.
I'm sorry, Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
I hope it's a quick question. If this would, I think, be a Dawn or Cheryling question. Um, Counsel Reyes has got me thinking, and I'm wondering, is there a way with a bond like this, if we had either a property owner or an apartment property owner, if they had um a certain level of renters that met a certain income level? Is there a way that we could either stair step the bond assessment for them or um set aside the bond payment if they had a certain amount of renters at a certain income level? Does that, it does my question. So let's say we had, you know, somebody was renting a property that, you know, was at the, you know, lower part of the income scale. Is there a way that we could either make the the bond payment for that landlord less or forgive a certain part of it so that the impact then wouldn't just necessarily a hundred percent get passed on to the renter? Is that ever an option, anything like that, or is that too complicated?
I would that there's a lot of complication that I'm not sure would be possible or not. I have gut feeling it would not be possible in any way. Uh but you'd have to remember is we would have to allocate those costs somewhere else because that service amount would be, it's a fixed amount, and we leave base upon what we need to collect to pay that debt service. So if we were, if there was any way to exempt some property or something like that, the the cost would be passed on to other property owners.
However, um I believe uh the council passed that exempt for ta- property taxes for low-income housing that impacted the SEPA project. Isn't that correct, Dawn?
Uh, it's coming to council probably in July.
Yeah, so any, so and that impacts that housing um projects um and any other um prod- project that provides low-income housing. So that, I think that gets to what you're, what you're saying, Counsel President Grimes. Okay, well, that sounds promising because that would be a nice way to, you know, what we need, but not maybe have the burden be as heavy.
But it would have to be, I mean, it would be specifically to developments, and you know, we don't have any right now that um provided them affordable housing according to the criteria by the the federal government.
Correct. Our current uh multifamily housing still be paying that. So it'd be future things like SEPA, but the ones that we currently have would like, they still be paying their property taxes, of which the bond would be.
Unless they could show they meet the criteria, but SEPA would be excluded. And then maybe some other things being built in Basalt Creek, maybe, or?
A a nonprofit, yes. So we can talk more when that comes back in front of you, but a nonprofit affordable housing complex, and there are parameters around that, and that will be back in front of you next month. So we'll have a better answer for any potential new ones that would fit under that criteria.
Okay, it was a thought, but thank you.
All right. All right, so uh moving on to uh council, me and gender review communications and roundtable. Um, I've got Counsel Pratt is up for the pledge. Do you want to take a pass on that tonight? With your juice, all right? So I think that if we go through the cycle, that would move it to Counsel Reyes will be doing the pledge. Does that sound okay? Counsel Reyes will be doing the pledge of allegiance. Uh, we've got two uh proclamations tonight, one being National Pollinator Week, the second being Gun Violence Awareness Month. Who would like to do National Pollinator proclamation? No surprise, Counsel Brooks. All right. And how about the Gun Violence Awareness Proclamation? You want, yeah, because I, you know, it'd be tough. Counsel Hill, you want to do that one? All right, this could be. All right. This could be tough for Counsel Pratt to do any talking. All right. And then any questions on the consent agenda tonight? All right. So that leaves us with roundtable. And we only really have nine minutes. So we're not really gonna get too far on that. So how about folks a break? The next nine minutes, we'll reconvene at seven. And we'll do our roundtable when we do our other council communications at our regular city council meeting. All right. So go ahead and adjourn the work session for this evening.